Good evening, we call to order the Cleveland Heights University High School District Board Meeting. Thank you for joining us. This is a regular meeting of the school board and all items will be discussed or voted on have been posted as required by state law. We are here to conduct business of governing in the district, to set goals, to hear reports from the superintendent and treasurer, to approve budgets, contracts, and personal items, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the administration. Mr. Gaynor, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here. I now turn the meeting over to our superintendent for awards and recognition.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
We start tonight's meeting with our awards and recognitions, recognizing our Tiger Team Members of the Month for April. These Cleveland Heights University High staff members have been recognized by their peers and members of the community for going above and beyond to continuously contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. Your colleagues who nominated you for this recognition have shared these heartfelt words about you. If you are here, please come to the front, we can take a picture. From the Board of Education, Doris Dottie Mapson. Dottie helped our track team place at the state championship meet by doing some serious work for us and making sure that our student athletes could be bused from the middle schools to our high school to practice, and for our high school athletes to be bused to the Wiley Campus for practice. She is incredible and really works, really wants to work for our kids. From Boulevard Elementary School, Cynthia Douglas. Cynthia is a security monitor at Boulevard and gives her all to redirect students on the right path by using her integrity and compassion for all students and staff. She has innovative ideas and helps throughout the entire building. From Canterbury Elementary School, Karen Alchuler. Karen is our lead academic success tutor. She helps our tutors with analyzing data and scheduling time with students. This is on top of the great work she does with kids. They love their time with her. From Delisle Option Center, Dr. Brian Williams. Dr. Williams consistently looks out for the best interests of his students. In the years that I've spent at Delisle, I've come to respect Dr. Williams on the highest possible level. While we may have established steps and procedures, Dr. Williams isn't afraid to say, "I need this or that for my students," and "I appreciate that quality." From Fairfax Elementary School, Regina Lacy, the school nurse. I appreciate Regina because of her positive attitude. She always has a smile on her face even when things get hectic. She is very pleasant and helpful to the students and staff. From Garrity School, Riva Purce. She's a speech-language pathologist. Mrs. Purce is a dedicated educational professional who will be retiring at the end of the current school year. I have had the pleasure of watching her work with her preschool students for four years and have always been impressed by her patience and strong relationships. From Heights High School, Tandra Menifee. Tandra has demonstrated excellent leadership from the guidance department. She has always been accessible, genuine, and empathetic to our students and parents. As the lead this year, she has been consistent in her communication to all stakeholders. She has maintained and presented relative data, she has created schedules for testing, and has helped students navigate a range of challenges and experiences. From Monticello Middle School, Crystal Kerr. Crystal should be recognized because she is a talented, hard-working educator. Although new to the district, she is not new to teaching, and I have learned so much from her already. She has an amazing rapport with the students and gets along great with the staff. She always has a smile on her face and finds something positive to say each day. From Noble Elementary School, Carla Campbell. At least a two-time winner, if not a three-time winner. Mrs. Campbell, three times. Mrs. Campbell is always bringing the sunshine. She is a welcoming face in the morning and is always willing to help in any way she can. Our building is super lucky to have her here. So you know how this works, we're gonna take a picture, so we'll have to, you know, take our picture, congratulations. From Oxford Elementary School, Timothy McDonald. Mr. McDonald is always bright and cheerful when he is working with his small groups. Timothy is a Heights grad and it has been so helpful having him around the building. He is always lending a helpful hand to any staff member or student in need, and we are happy to have him as a part of our Oxford team. From Roxborough Elementary School, Monica Rogers. Monica always seeks out effective strategies to support her young learners. She collaborates with different grade-level colleagues to improve her practice, vertically align instruction, and strive for excellence. Monica leads by example and creates a positive mentoring classroom environment where her students have fun while learning. And from Roxborough Middle School, Nathan Pilarsik. Nathan arrives to work early and ready to start the day on a positive note, always friendly and willing to help staff where needed. He thinks of fun activities to engage his students and genuinely cares about them. He is dependable, reliable, and respectful to his colleagues and staff. Congratulations to our winners. All right, so, we have a special moment that is coming up. As you all know, we have a superintendent cadre. We meet every month, and this is going to be the last time that we can have our seniors present because as of June, they will be graduates. So, I am going to ask three of our four seniors to give their final student cadre report tonight, and then we have a couple things after that. So I'm gonna welcome, oh lord, you're gonna make me cry, Taylor Evans, Owen Bisker, and Trinity Kimbrough.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby and Mr. Gaynor. My name is Taylor Evans and I am a senior at Heights High.
My name is Owen Bisker and I'm a senior at Heights High.
My name is Trinity Kimbrough and I'm a senior at Heights High. As members of the superintendent student cadre, we are here to give a brief report about what's happening at Heights High. We are honored to be here this evening, thank you so much for the opportunity. First, we would like to tell you about our athletic teams and provide an update about several upcoming events at Heights High. Athletics, baseball is currently in their final week of their regular season, they are competing for second place in the L E L. Baseball will host Akron Firestone in the opening round of the state playoffs of May 16th at 5:00 p.m. This year's softball injuries plagued the Tigers softball team especially at pitcher. Nonetheless, the girls fought hard and showed pride game in and game out. Softball travels to Akron Firestone Monday, May 8th for their playoff game. Girls lacrosse, the Lady Tigers are currently 6-6 on the season, they have shown a lot of growth on this field this year. Girls lacrosse travels to Yvonne on May 15th for their playoff game. Boys lacrosse also battled injuries and player availability this year. The boys also played hard and represented Heights well. They traveled to Stowe on May, they traveled to Stowe on May 15th for their first playoff game. Track, it has been a successful season for the track team. They have taken second place at the Beechwood Meet and third place at the Wineheart Relays. Track is hopeful to send a number of events down to compete at the state meet first weekend of June. Boys tennis, boys tennis played in a ton of competitive matches this year for more coming down to, for most coming down to the wire. They traveled to Solon Community Center of, on May 11th for a sectional tournament. Their Tigers, the Tigers have a number of talented freshmen, so the future is bright. Boys volleyball, the inaugural season of a huge success for the boys volleyball. Over 40 boys came out and stayed with the team the entire season. They finished their regular season 8-6. The boys traveled to Brunswick on May 10th for their first-ever state playoff match.
Wow.
Wow, that's really cool.
Now we will share some heights happening, food, for, I'm sorry, some heights happening for April and May in April. In April, the academic challenge team won with an incredible 865 points in the 15th week of the Nordson Academic Challenge. The students faced off against Our Lady of the Elms and Wiggles. The Heights High Drama Club performed William Shakespeare's A Midsummer Night's Dream on April 28th through the 22nd for their annual spring play. The play features seniors Maxwell Frey, Cam Graves, Daryl Sneed, and Mira Whitaker Cantor. The I M D held their final concerts on April 27th and the 28th, which featured senior soloist Michael Belcher, Micah Belcher, who performed Concertino Bezo by Richard Lieb on bass trombone. Sorry if I pronounced any of that wrong. The first annual Heights High Science Symposium was held on April 18th. Students designed a poster in a science discipline of their choice and presented them to their classmates, parents, and teachers. A physics boat regatta was also held in the school's pool. On April 27th, Heights High students had the opportunity to attend a forum at the City Club of Cleveland to listen to guest speaker and C H U H alum Gina Abercrombie-Winstanley. Ms. Abercrombie-Winstanley, Winn-Stanley is currently the Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer for the U.S. Department of State.
I can say for, as one of those 40 boys for volleyball, it's been very nice. Here are some updates for the month of May. Heights High students will complete AP testing this week. Seniors in Avid will hold a side day ceremony on May 16th at 1:30 p.m. in the Heights High auditorium where they will announce their college intent, receive their Avid stalls, and be presented with awards. V M D Spring Concert is on May 12th at 7:00 p.m. in the main auditorium and tickets are $5. Gospel Choir Spring Concert is also on May 19th at 7:30 p.m. in the main auditorium and tickets are $5 and will have a special performance by the Oxford Elementary Dance Troop. The full calendar of senior activities can be found on the website, and finals for ninth to 12 careers will take place from May 31st to June 2nd. Next, we would each like to speak about our experiences at Heights High student and as a member of the superintendent student cadre and what it has meant to us. For me, these past four years have been nothing short of amazing. Academically and athletically, it has all been a true blessing to have been a part of the school. Now, I am fortunate enough to be attending Case Western Reserve University, but I will never forget what Cleveland Heights has done for me. As for the superintendent cadre, it has been an honor to be a part of a group that works hard to make Cleveland Heights better than what it already is.
So for me, Heights High has meant so much to me. Coming into high school, I never expected what all I've been able and blessed to accomplish. From joining M San and becoming a leader, and then becoming an N H S member, and now our chapter president, varsity cheerleader, gospel choir member, gear ambassador, and those are just naming a few of the amazing events I've been able to partake in. I'm thankful for my life and the plan that has prospered in my life regardless of the different things I didn't know I would be able to overcome. I realize now, I'm excited for the future, however, I have some feelings of nervousness, but I realize that my present now was once my future, and I'm so grateful for the way everything has played out. So, I've enjoyed my time in student cadre and I'm signing out, but I'm excited to close this chapter and begin a new one, so thank you all and I'll be back for sure, so.
My experience at Cleveland Heights High School has been very memorable. Heights has had, has, has so many things to offer, and throughout my four years, I found my home in so many different places. I'm extremely grateful for the friendships and the found family that I now have because of Heights. Class of 2023 has been through not the most normal high school experience, but I think that's what made my high school experience unique and special. With that, I'm so grateful and I'm so proud to say that I will be a Heights alumni as I continue my educational journey at Loyola University Chicago. I will always remember my Heights community and I'm so grateful for cadre, especially being the first four-year seniors of cadre. Thank you so much.
We have some special gifts for you for your contributions, and I, oh lord, I don't know what's gonna cry. I just want everyone here to know, come in the middle, and if we take the picture that, since they were freshmen, these students have been representing students, really, you know, I will go to them with an issue, what should we do about the cafeteria? They have grilled A D I, about the offerings, they've talked about student clubs and the things that are needed to support students, they give me feedback on cell phones, like the dress code, I mean, they are, I mean, and just even as underclassmen, so mature, really thoughtful, and really insightful, and so I want students to know, this cadre really has been representing students in student voice and making a really big difference. And I have grown as superintendent because of you guys, and always pleasant, mature, you know, just respected across the, the, the building and multiple things, activities, so I know that Loyola University, Ohio State, Case Western are gonna be better places because of these students next year, so thank you. And again. So we're gonna take a picture, and I can put this in my, I think that was the one thing. Last, a co-convener of cadre.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank all of you so much. Portrait of a graduate kind of comes to my mind. Those are...
Okay, so it is now time for our monthly school spotlight. During the school spotlight, Cleveland Heights University High staff and students join us to share something unique happening at their school. I see the Boulevard team is primed and ready, so I'm gonna have Dr. Johnson come on up with our group, and I will do the thing. Oh, you're gonna do it, Dr. Bauer? Great.
I was told to speak into the microphone, so. So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to thank Superintendent Kirby and the Board of Education for giving us this opportunity to share a very exciting event we had at Boulevard, but first and foremost, I want to introduce to you our literacy committee, or I think most of our literacy committee, it's a pretty big committee, I just want to tell you, so we, so I'm gonna just allow them to introduce themselves in their, in their role.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Hunt, Family Engagement Specialist. Karen Spinks, Administrative Assistant.
Joy Mahoney Curry, Title I Lead.
Sheri Bellini, I'm the Boulevard Self-contained Gifted Class 4 or 5 Split.
And Betsy Race, the School Counselor at Boulevard.
Okay, so, the event itself is properly named, the Annual Title I Family Literacy So the event itself took place on March 16th of this year, and it really stemmed from a few different things. First and foremost, it was tied directly to our building-level action plan. One of the action steps within that plan was to create a building-level literacy team, so that is actually the, a first for us to actually have a literacy team. What's nice about it is the team really is comprised of different stakeholders in the building, so we had voices coming from different perspectives. In addition to that, we've actually been talking about this for some time, is to actually kind of rebrand how we sort of, you know, give opportunity to families, and we called it the Boulevard Family Academy, so it's meant to have a series of different topics that are covered throughout the year, typically quarterly is how we, we plan them, and we'll cover various topics. Last year, we held a very successful event, and we really wanted to carry that over into this year and continue that, that new tradition that we were building to connect with families. And of course, it also serves a purpose as, as required through our Title I planning to have a literacy night, so it kind of allowed us to connect those, those two efforts. And then, the, the other piece is, is that the topic itself is really the, the idea to connect what we do in the classrooms with learning, and how we look at, you know, learning itself and how we look at some of our, and we'll get more into detail, but like our dispositional frameworks for learning and looking at learning profiles, and you'll, you'll learn about, if many of you may know, we have our learner, our learner powers, our superheroes at Boulevard, so we wanted families to have an opportunity to learn more about them and what, you know, what we did with them in school. We also felt that there was a strong connection with these learner powers at home, and that parents can participate in encouraging their, their, their own children to be lifelong learners, and what it means to be an independent, self-reliant learner. So I'm gonna turn it over to my team to go more into detail with this, and I will tell you, I'm giving them a quick instruction with the remote as I turn it over here, so.
Well, it's a quick instruction. Things can't, um...
It's not working, so, Dr. Bauer, can you, you'll be able to do it? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to share some good news and highlight Boulevard. I was really excited to be part of the Boulevard Literacy Night. It was nice, you really can't tell, but the mask was probably made for a kindergartner, so that was fun. Yeah, and, and the cape, so it was good to be able to, to support them and have a whole room where families and students were coming in to really learn about Engaged Emma, who, that was my character, and I was able to embody that character and involve them in activities to talk about what engaged Emma does. She listens, she puts her listening ears on, she is engaged with the speaker, she makes good choices, she follows directions, and I think it, these learner profiles really just highlight the elasticity of learning and how important it is for us to share those opportunities with families so they can have those common conversations across the dinner table and really support the learning that's happening in our building and support the climate. So we know that family and community engagement is part of our strategic priorities, but there's a reason we do it. We know that having that fabric of support around students where those commonalities are shared is really about building relationships, really about having families access that information so that they can in, in turn, in turn support those efforts at home, and I think this literacy night was a really great example of what Boulevard is doing good and great, and the opportunity for families to really get their hands on some of these great learner profiles. I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try. Look at that, I can't.
So I'm gonna go through our six learner powers. The first one is Collaborative Cory. And we taught the families, we went over their characteristics for each person. Collaborative Cory, he listens to others, he takes turns, and he learns to compromise. Persistent Pablo, he doesn't give up. He uses different strategies when one doesn't work, he tries another one. He asks others for help and he learns from his mistakes. Reflective Roxanne, she thinks about her stores, her choices, she sets goals to improve, she learns from her mistakes, and she connects her, what she learned with, with what she already knew. Inquisitive Imani, she asks relevant questions, she's very curious about her learning, and she's always looking for answers. Problem solver Sam identifies the problem, he thinks about his choices, he tries a strategy, he plans his steps, and he collaborates with others. And Engaged Emma, as Engaged Emma told us, she listens to the speaker, she participates by sharing her ideas, and she stays focused on her task.
So what we had throughout the night is, we first started with dinner in the cafeteria for everybody, so we had pizza, salad, and cupcakes, and bottles of water for everyone. As people came in, they were assigned to one of six sessions. So based, because we had our six learner powers, we had six different sessions that were going on, but we, time could only accommodate for everybody to go to three sessions. So what we strategically did is everybody was handed different sheets of paper that told them where to go, so then not everybody was going to session one and nobody ended up in session six. So as people came in, they got a different color paper, and they were told where to go to the different three sessions out of the six that they had. And then we concluded the evening with some raffles, that'll be talked about next.
So this is my data slide, and those of you that know Boulevard, we're all about the data, but before talking about that, I do want to mention some, some key important details. Spinks mentioned our learner profiles, and I want to give you some history about those learner profiles. It's been about five years ago, we actually did a survey with our students, and we asked them what they thought it was to be a good learner, and some of the things that came out of our students were very consistent, more behavioral as far as sitting down, raising your hand, being kind, but none of those dispositions were about learning, about your cognitive process, what it means to learn, and so I think that's really key, and Dr. Jenkins did a really wonderful article that we did share the night of our family literacy night, and each of you can have a copy of this, and it really provides the journey of what Boulevard has been going through for the last five years.
Can you please speak in the mic?
I'm sorry, it's more than a theme, it's not, it's not a year-to-year we're changing the theme, this has been something that we have worked on for the last five years. I also want to share, I pulled this from my classroom, every classroom has this, so with these dispositions, we have the learning challenge, and this is a visual of what it means to learn, and the behaviors of learning, yes, our kids do get frustrated, and so this is just a good picture, picture of, you know what, it's a cycle. You start here and you go in a pit, and we, we literally use those words, you're in the pit right now and it's okay, but eventually you're gonna climb out of the pit and guess what, you're gonna be there again because there's gonna be new learning, and so that is very impactful for all of our students to hear, it helps with their frustration around learning. It helps with their frustration around learning. So, I wanted you guys to see that this evening, because it's very important to what we do. So, the data, very exciting. You know, with our literacy night, Boulevard, to be honest, we have had challenges with getting our parents in to attend the events. So, some years are better than others. When we look at '22 compared to this year, we actually had 32 participants in year '22. And this year, we had 113. So, it was really nice, and we're really proud of that. And then, there's just a breakdown of the students and their families that participated at each different level. So, of course, our kindergarten students, they're, you know, ready to go, we had 33% of kindergarten students. And if you can kind of see, I'm not going to read it all to you, but our turnout, we were very pleased with our turnout. All students received some type of token, whether they participated or not. So, K3, they had a mask and a superhero pencil, and then, grades four and five, they received a pencil and a notebook. And then, we had 19 students who actually won either a book or a T-shirt of some sort. And before, yes. And before I end, I do want to say that when mentioning this learning challenge, parents were like, "Oh, okay, we get it." Because at first, they thought, "Yeah, you're supposed to come to school and behave, right? You're supposed to raise your hand." And there were a lot of nods when we were explaining this, but then, when we talked about, "But what does it mean to learn?", then they got it, and we saw that visually. So, thank you for your time, we had a great night, hopefully you'll join us next year.
There should be one more. So, Reflective Roxanne spends a lot of time reflecting. I think I was Reflective Roxanne, wasn't I? We all took on a role. Whoa. So, I had the privilege of talking to some parents that night, that shared what they were walking away with. For me, that was the magic of the moment, was to hear a parent, like, get it. We are in the lunchroom before, pizza, cupcakes, water, craziness, and the parents are reading the blog, and saying things, and asking questions about this, like, that's the impact. And you know, we teach kids about reflection, because that's a strategy for life. That's how you defer and decide what you do next, and what worked and what didn't. And when I listen to those profile qualities, I'm like, "You know what? If we got all those in our world, what a great place we would be in, right?" So, I just want to share a couple of the testimonials. One parent, it was actually a grandparent, reported to me, "I feel such a connection with the staff, and I love that you value the introduction of these important qualities to help the students grow their interpersonal skills. It will have a huge impact on them later." My students get excited, parent of a first grader, "When there is a day that we wear capes." Yeah, we know that, Liz knows that. A few of us around here know that we do wear capes at school. It has a lasting impression. And then, another parent shared, "Reading the blog and seeing the growth of this program is truly amazing." And then, finally, a student said to me, and the student was a fifth grader, it got cut off on mine, said, "When I'm reflective, when I'm reflective, it helps me fix problems so I can be better at school." Like, I want that thought when I go to sleep at night, because that's why we do this work. We do wear capes on occasion. We aren't wearing them right now, but we do believe that superheroes don't have to wear capes. I want to share one tidbit, and then we're going to open up for any questions that you might have, which is, the six of these pictures, an unknown fact that somebody isn't going to say here, they were drawn by Dr. Jenkins, who, his undergraduate degree is in art. You go down one of our hallways, and you'll see huge, huge versions of them. And that kind of became part of that first-year inspiration. I happen to have a signed picture that I think, I don't know.
That could be worth it.
Okay, maybe, but it's legit. So, anyways, questions for the board, or anybody else about our program?
You know, I love, first of all, tonight is such a great example of the value of inviting a school to every meeting. I really love this. We had such a neat presentation last time from Oxford about what they're doing for attendance, and Noble has always just had this incredible vibe. You know, I love visiting Noble, I, you know, really, maybe this tells you a little bit more about how boring my life is, but, I mean, I had a fantastic time volunteering at the Halloween party, that was just so great, and the Noble staff is always so enthusiastic. I just, thank you guys so much. I mean, to me, this is the stuff that builds memories for children and for families. And I think that there is such incredible value about finding something that works and sticking with it. Like, the five-year thing, to me, says a lot, because it really does become ingrained in the culture of that building. And so, I don't have any questions, I just say bravo, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for sharing some of your culture with us, because as Dan said, you know, we see other districts, we see other districts, and we also see schools within our districts. And this is really one of the first times, I mean, because we've just started this whole format, that we hear from you guys, and this is really fun stuff. And you can see it's infectious, and, you know, the big number I like is when you went from 32 to 100 and some kids, or participants, and, you know, your next year, I mean, you obviously know you need to grow that.
Yes, absolutely.
And this is a way to do it. So, congratulations, and thanks for sharing it.
Thank you. And I just, well, that's going to be my question. I'm curious how you grew it, and, you know, what things were successful, and what you plan to do in the future. But I need to point out that Taylor Evans is a Boulevard alum.
Yes. She is. She is.
Yes, she is. And by the way, her father was a student in one of my classes at Oxford way back when, he just stepped out, but, so, we're all full circle. Do you want to answer?
Yeah, so, I think, I think one of the things that we've recognized is, you know, with this, you know, we, reaching out to families more frequently, and just like, keeping those relationships, and just, it kind of taking like, different angles to market it. You know, the more we're like a squeaky wheel, I mean, we have our Friday newsletter, we have our phone calls, and we go through the students too, the more we can kind of give them, you know, of course, we have food too, and we, that's always good when we have food and giveaways and things like that. So, I think if we're, it's like a marketing piece, because, you know, we had one of our spring concerts today, and it was actually during, for this one, we have another one next week, was actually during the day, and we had a lot of participants. And I think part of that's attributed to the fact that, you know, we sent out a lot of information about it, we were just, you know, really drumming it up on our end, too. So, I think that's part of it, but I also want to think, you know, say that, you know, it's like word on the street, that, you know, some great things are happening, and like, each quarter, you know, if we have a different topic, and we run a similar format, then, you know, I think it's an opportunity to say, "Hey, I'm curious about what they're going to talk about next," you know, things like that. So, we hope to grow it, you know, from that standpoint.
We also sit home on each kid the night of the day of, a sticker. And it said, "Don't forget, literacy night in the tines." Every kid, K5, wore that home, and it was visible.
That's great.
And just to say one more thing, we had a lot of staff participation that night, too, and I think that is a great optic for families, to show how dedicated we are to an evening event. So, and I, you know, that's just as a building principal, I'm very proud to have a team that takes time out of their own families to come down, and, you know, and just join other families and participate. So, I just wanted to publicly thank my team for just making time out tonight, and we, and, you know, we have an array of staff here, too, so it's not, we're not all teachers. So, it's really great.
Yeah, I would like to. Yeah, I'd like to say congratulations to Boulevard, and it was just very impressive to see how you grew the participation of the families and students, and I want to know if you're going to continue with your family literacy.
Oh, yeah.
Night for years to come, yeah. And I'm also an alumni of Boulevard.
Bar, Everly Bar.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins and team, thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Keep up the great work. Excellent.
I'm going to extend to our reading sessions.
Okay, that's it for you, Liz.
Yeah, that concludes the words and recognitions, and school's done.
Okay, next, we're going to have the statement from the audience. The Board of Education welcomes public comments at its regular monthly meeting. You will be invited to speak in order in which you are signed up. Public comment session will only be limited for 45 minutes overall, unless extended by a vote of the board. Please follow these guidelines. Do not register other people. Keep your comments to three minutes. Address your comments to the presiding officer. Refrain from naming students or staff members. Refrain from campaigning or endorsing candidates for public office. When invited to speak, state your name, address group affiliation, and the topic you plan to address. And the first one is Angela, is it Fazolo?
Angel Fasolo.
Angel Fasolo.
Hi, my name is Angel Fasolo. I used to be a proud grad of the Heights District. I was a parent in the district. We are a homeschool family, and we choose to move forward as a homeschool family. I'm here tonight talking about a number of failures at Rocksmid, the Rocksmid leadership, and the district leadership. That's, some of it's the district leadership allowing some of this, some of it's all the leadership at Rocksmid. It's a toxic culture. You guys have had a number of families address this. I've addressed some of these things for a number of years. Now, you had like, 75 people sign a letter saying that they were going through some of the same experiences that I was writing to the board, that I was writing to the school administration about for a long time. Some of the board members would get back to me and say, basically, that essentially, I was just making this up. Where was I getting my, from where was I getting the facts? But they were facts. They weren't fabrications, they weren't stories. These were real experiences that students and a number of staff members inside that building, teachers, dedicated teachers, dedicated staff members, students working hard, trying their best, had to deal with. The administration inside that building is retaliatory, it's punitive, it's a horrible culture, it's a horrible climate. When I say that, when other parents say that, that's not saying that the teachers are failing. It means the teachers are having to work that much harder. This was the only Rocksmid experience some of these kids are going to have. Parents addressed these things. The board did not seem to care. Administrators did not seem to care. Last week, when there should have been public comments, when people were bringing up a number of concerns to the district, you guys switched the work session, you switched the board meeting to a work session, so that everyone who wanted to speak kind of got passed off. And last week, at the meeting that you had at Rocksmid, administration spoke for 80 minutes at the families who showed up. You didn't want to hear these voices. The leadership there in here has failed.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Melissa Wood. I am here this evening to address multiple issues. The first is the fact that you are planning to fill the Director of Principal Leadership and Development position here at Miramar. This position has been vacant since March 2019. The job included equity work, but we now have an equity task force. If we have done without this position for four years, why is it necessary now? As a taxpayer in this district, I would like to hear the justification. As a parent, I would like to hear the rationale for filling this assuredly highly-paid position when we are in need of intervention specialists, counselors, paraprofessionals, and security guards. What we should be doing is raising the starting salaries of our security guards and paras to a living wage, and offering signing bonuses to special education teachers to attract them to our district. This leads me to the next issue, school safety. I understand we have another root cause analysis committee. I take issue with some of the suggestions in their last PowerPoint. Where is the evidence that shows more armed cops, metal detectors, vape detectors, pot-sniffing dogs are effective in addressing fighting in schools? Do you really think that vaping in the bathroom is causing the fighting we are seeing this year? Not only does such a reactive approach conflict absolutely with our stated equity and anti-racist goals for this district, studies show it is more counselors and mental health professionals in the buildings that actually prevent school violence. Cops, to keep people who aren't supposed to be in our buildings, out is one thing, but cops walking the floors, policing our students, is an entirely different matter. If you are serious about addressing school violence, you need to develop a cooperative relationship with our teachers. This requires immediately providing clarity as to what actions a teacher is expected to take to prevent or intervene in an altercation between students. Teachers and other front-facing staff need to know what actions will result in fact-finding and disciplinary measures. There are more teachers out on administrative leave this year than I have ever seen. This has serious consequences for the teacher, coworkers, and students. Teachers should not be afraid to interact with students in times of crisis, because it might jeopardize their job. Teachers need to know that if injured, they can access workers' compensation and assault leave. Teachers are what we have in these volatile situations. They need this board and this administration to have their backs. Unless the situation changes, I am worried we're going to see a hemorrhaging of teachers. I have a kid with two more years to go. I want her to have the best instruction, and I want all of our children to have the best instruction. I don't want to see our teachers leave for districts with better working conditions. I was going to continue on with a little bit longer quote, but I'm going to leave you with this. If you use decorum to silence people who hold you accountable, all you are doing is using decorum as a tool of oppression. I quote a very brave Montana legislator.
Thank you.
Three minutes is totally not enough.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have Claire Taft.
Hi, Claire Taft, Superintendent Kirby, we're pleased to speak with you tonight. I'm a parent of a former Rocksmid student, a current Rocksmid student, and a rising Rocksmid student, and I'm here to talk about the climate and culture inside of Rocksmid Little School.
Mic, Little, speaking to the mic, yeah.
I know you've heard some of this before, I know you've heard some of it last week at the evening.
At the meeting that was at Rocksmid, I know that you heard some of this from Superintendent Kirby, and from an email that was sent, which I was one of the authors of, and a number of parents from Rocksmid, and former Rocksmid parents, and future Rocksmid parents signed on to that. So, I know you know about the problems, and I know you know that the climate and culture in Rocksmid is not what we all want it to be right now. It's not where we want our children to be, it's not where we want our teachers to be. We want to improve this for everyone. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the culture. It seems a pervasive thought right now, that the culture in Rocksmid is very punitive. Rocksmid is supposed to be using PBIS, there should be positive behavior and corrections in that manner, and it's very punitive. There are a lot of punishments that happen when a few children are out of order, and an entire group is punished instead. That happens on a regular basis. That is not okay, and it doesn't help the children who need the help, and need the That is not okay, and it doesn't help the children who need the help and need the correction, and it doesn't help the children who are doing what they are supposed to be doing every day. Punishing for the sins of a few is simply not effective. PBIS used properly is more effective. The climate in the building seems oppressive. Children are not having a good time. Children are not excited to be there. Children are not excited to learn or to see their friends. Children are staying in their small group that they've always known and not going out and meeting other people because they don't feel like they can. The school is causing anxiety and social-emotional problems. I realize that students are coming into the building with social-emotional problems. Students are also getting social-emotional problems from being in the building and experiencing anxiety from being in the building. We need to improve this. We need to work to make our students want to be there to learn, to make them successful in life going forward. Just some comments that I've heard from other parents, that there's negative behavior. The school culture and climate seems very negative, that again with the punishments or the denial of rewards to all students based on the activities or the behavior of only a few. And really, another large concern is the prevention of learning because of the culture in the building. Are things so disruptive, are things so punitive that children are losing out on learning time, which is so critical for them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we are going to have our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
A motion we consider our consent agenda?
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Calendar piece on this, or is that separate?
I think that's under superintendent.
It's just informational under superintendent.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heitz.
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that.
Is it time for a superintendent subject?
Oh, okay. Can I go?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right. I'm going to share my screen, just to lead us through the presentation. So again, I'll provide the updates for the month of April. Is my screen sharing?
No.
Doesn't that look like it's happening? Hold on. There you go. Sorry about that. There you go.
It's up now.
All right, so I'll align to our strategic plan. First, I want to start by acknowledging that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week in our country. This is a time that we show our educators how much we value them for everything that they do every day. There are so many examples that I have the privilege of being able to observe as I visit schools and visit classrooms of the dedication of our staff. From the third-grade teacher that works in a small group with a student trying to understand fractions and pulls out every manipulative in the book you can find to show the concept, to our musical team at the high school who have done just tremendous concerts this year. We know this was a special year, being that it was the 100th anniversary of the instrumental music department at Heights. I have seen teachers engaged in helping students repair broken relationships and deal with hurt feelings and to be able to learn and grow from that experience. I have seen teachers work hard to prepare our students for opportunities and contests and sports and service. I have seen teachers write recommendation after recommendation after recommendation for students to help them gain access to scholarships and into college and beyond. I could never thank teachers enough for what they do. There is no space like the space of a classroom, and our teachers arrive every day ready to give their best for our students. So just wanted to start my presentation with that deep thanks for the work of teachers. As it relates to the work that's been happening this past year, and I want to start with our climate planning work in particular. We've been holding collaborative climate planning meetings with our high school this year, and we started these weekly meetings also including our middle schools. I want to thank the people from Roxmid for sharing their experiences, both tonight but also during the meeting that we had last week with the administrative team there. We are really working hard to address those concerns, and we know it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, but I do want you to know that we have dedicated time at every level in the district to really look at those concerns and see what we can address this year, you know, for the duration of the year over this summer and as we get ready for next year as well. It's been very helpful to hear the feedback, and we will have a follow-up meeting both at Roxmid. We also are planning a meeting at Monticello, and then there's some just additional smaller planning meetings that we're holding. For example, we are just starting the process of looking at our elementary school structures because all of our schools really are connected, and we want to have a comprehensive plan around social-emotional support for our students. But we also took the recommendations that came out of the secondary planning meeting and started to map out specifically owners of that work, dates of implementation, and resource needs as well. So we've been looking specifically at how can we make sure that each of our students has a clear, not only academic path of what they need in order to thrive, but also on the social-emotional side, just as important for students as well, to make sure that they have what that takes. So much more to come on that, but that work has started. As it relates to academics from the data cohort side, in our high schools, we are tracking the progress of our students in grades nine through 12. We do this every quarter, just to make sure that they are on track academically as it relates to getting to graduation and beyond. Some of the events the students did speak to, so we did have students go and visit the City Club of Cleveland, and there was a Heights High alumna who was speaking on that day, and students had an opportunity to engage in that experience. We also had our first science symposium this year at the high school that the students noted as well that happened on April 18th. Our students are going many places, so this doesn't capture everything, you guys know this, but we did have students from the instrumental music department go to Chicago in March for their spring tour. We also have students who visited France this year. We also have students, I believe, in Guatemala, who will be traveling to Guatemala. So Heights is around the world. Very excited in the work that I've been engaged in around CTE leadership. We met last week with the teachers just to look at our first draft. It's a rough draft, but we're starting to put some bones on our work around CTE as we move forward, and we'll be having a follow-up meeting with a smaller planning team so we can add those revisions as well. Connected to that, we had a team of people from not only Heights High but also Warrensville, Shaker, and Maple Heights visit the Four Cities Compact, which is another consortium like ours that incorporates, let's get this wrong, Wadsworth, Copley, Norton, and there's a, I cannot remember the fourth, but we went to all those schools to see their CTE programs in place, as well as great visit. We held our first coffee with the superintendent on April 19th. We're gonna continue to have these regularly, both this year, we'll do one in June but also next year as well, so we can have district parents come together in the morning and really just have a free-for-all conversation on things that are on people's hearts and minds as well. It was a really actually great conversation, so we want to, we'll continue to do that in partnership with parents in the district. And as it relates to getting ready for transition, and these webinars, this transition piece is really important as it relates to our work around climate and social-emotional support. So I want to thank Lisa Hunt and Dr. Towns for doing our first-ever transition webinar for families as they get ready to go from middle school to high school. So those are available now on demand, so families can have that as a resource as they get their students ready for high school. We also hosted in April a family leaders lunch, so different district parent leaders of district organizations came together on a Saturday in April in order to share ideas, successes, and next steps as it relates to deepening our family leadership work. And then I just want to bring everyone's attention to school funding, and I'm sure we'll probably talk a little bit about this later in the meeting. We are continuing to encourage our stakeholders to advocate for fair school funding that really favors our district and favors public school districts. We want to make sure that that formula provides as much funding per student as possible because it will really mean, it'll really connect with our ability to support all the needs and the things that we want for our students. We also want the state to increase funding for school safety and student wellness, and we would like that included in the budget, not something that we have to apply for. So currently, if we want to get additional funds for student safety, we have to apply in a competitive grant. We would like for the state to provide those resources to all schools just as a part of that budgeting process. And so here we have the contact information for our legislators in Columbus. I did have a great visit this past Monday with Representative Juanita Brent. We visited Canterbury Elementary School together. Taylor Evans actually was shadowing me as a part of her student project, and so we were able to visit Canterbury Rocks and Monticello Middle School on that day. And then in terms of end-of-the-year events, you know, it is May, there's lots going on. So we have graduation on May 31st. National Honor Society induction is coming up, I believe it's on May 22nd. The Heights Tiger 5K is May 20th. The staff awards ceremony is June 1st. And then we have summer programming kicking off soon after school ends, everything from Tiger Camp, the Camp Invention, to the Reaching Heights Summer Music Camp as well, June 13th through the 17th. Then finally, if anybody's looking for something to do tomorrow evening, you can catch me at the Reaching Heights Spelling Bee, where I will be on the board Believers Team as team captain. I'm very excited to be a speller this year, supporting Reaching Heights, which supports our schools. That concludes my report for the month of April. Happy to take questions, comments. Any questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to remind everybody, because it wasn't on your list of things, that academic challenge, so our kids are gonna be competing yet again in the season finale on May 27th at 11:30 a.m. That's Channel 5, WEWS, and I want to point out that the score that they got the last time that they appeared, the score of 865, is the top score in the show's 54-year history as far as the show can go back through their records and find it. So we're pretty sure that's the top score ever in a 54-year history, and so that means our kids will be moving on to participate in the season finale on May 27th.
So is that season finale kind of like a championship possibly?
It's the top three scoring teams of the season. So yes, it's the season champion.
Good. Yeah. So I'm gonna move on in my presentation, actually, if we don't mind, to the calendar proposal. And as Dr. Lombardo comes up, this is one of the items, we've been working in collaboration with the union on issues around, kind of speaking to some of the public comments, wanting to make sure that we're providing adequate professional development to our staff. And so Cabinet took a look at that request and also looked at all the amount, all of the planning time that we have for next year and are going to be making a proposal to add an additional professional development day at the beginning of the year, which would push our school start day back by one day. But Dr. Lombardo will take us through what that whole process looks like because we'll go through the proposal process.
Okay, great. If we go to the first slide, anytime there is a calendar proposal change, there is a process that we must follow. There's Board Policy 8210 and Administrative Guideline 8210, and basically what this says in summary is at least 30 days before adopting any change to the calendar, there needs to be a hearing or a first reading, which will be tonight. The superintendent shall consider the impact of the proposed change. The superintendent will also look at the comparability of the proposed change with other schedules around the area. There will be chance for community input, so Caitlin will put this up on the website. And again, for 30 days, we'll gather that information, and then the board will take action if they choose during the June board meeting. So there's a minor change that we're proposing. The original calendar has April 22nd as the first day for students. The modified change, as Ms. Kirby mentioned, would be to have a professional development day for August 22nd and then push the day for the first day of, first day for students on August 23rd. This is in Board Docs, and that link does show the entire calendar, and in red is the change for that calendar, and you'll see there's that minor change there.
How many readings? Is this a two or three?
One reading, and then after 30 days, the next one will be take action.
Two readings.
Yeah, it'll be two readings.
Do you have anything? I've got some questions unless you have.
Sure, one more slide. When we look at a calendar change, we also need to look at the hours by the state for all levels, and you can see here that grades K through six, there's 900, oh my goodness, 910, it's hard for me to see that, I apologize, and then grade seven through 12 is 1,001 hours per year. So you'll see even with this change, there are six calamity days for high school, three for seniors, middle school will be nine days, and elementary school will be 23 days. These are the calamity days in case we do have to close for any kind of emergency.
We can take questions now.
So sure, any questions?
So are our, we have a calendar committee. Does the calendar, is the calendar committee met? Will they be meeting about this?
So with the calendar committee, I did share the change with them last week, and I did ask for feedback on any questions and concerns, and I did not get any. I did talk with unions, 795, and people are on board with the change. Within this 30 days, there is a chance for feedback from anyone, and I will bring that feedback forward if there's any changes.
Yeah, we received a message from the union. I couldn't quite tell if it was in disagreement with the calendar, but apparently you guys have mended that fence.
Yeah, we discussed that with them.
And the purpose of the professional development?
It's around our safety initiatives, but Liz, if you wanted to.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things that we've been hearing from a variety of stakeholders is that we want more training for our staff on not only safety but also things like restorative practices, and so we want to take that full day in order to provide that information to every role in the district, and that's gonna mean that we will need that time, an additional day, to do that professional learning.
And it is a day loss, though, of education for the kids.
It's a day of instructional, right, so there's one less day of instruction for the school year for students.
I think, in my opinion, I have to, I have to trust staff on the appropriateness of spending a professional development day for this purpose, and if the, if 795 is on board, I certainly understand, and as we heard from one of our teachers today in an email, that, you know, they really are struggling, I think, to get some of this safety understanding. So if that's, if that's the type of stuff that you're working in to this professional development, I think it's, it's great. I kind of wonder if one day is enough, but I would hate to see another.
Yeah, it's, I think that one day will set the stage, but this work is something that has to be embedded in the life cycle of a school's professional learning. So we want to get everyone on the same page so that we can build from that, because for example, and this is one thing we talked about in the work session, we do have people that are trained in restorative practices, but it might be 15% of the school staff there. We want to get everyone on board, not only teachers, but every role from bus drivers to, you know, our lunchroom personnel, to, you know, people who work with students in after-school activities, to our paraprofessionals, just everyone. Our building after-school activities, to our parent professionals, just everyone, our building, even building grounds staff as well.
So I've seen some times where staff members would opt out of the professional development and not show. Is it required attendance, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, you know, if you don't attend, it would be the same as, you know, if you're taking a sick day or something like that. But I anticipate that we'll have pretty good attendance, because this is something we're working on collaboratively with our teacher and leadership and our other bargaining units as well, so.
I'm glad you're thinking outside the box, trying to work more professional development in for our staff.
Yeah, well, and planning takes time. I mean, it really does. Planning does take time. This would be difficult to fit in with all of the other things that staff are working on at the beginning of the year. And we want to be really intentional and thoughtful about what this looks like, but also how we kind of support and reinforce the professional development throughout the school year.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is just something that you, I know you've been working on, and something that's needed. So I agree with, you know, the one day of the professional development. And I just hope, and I mean, I'm sure most of the, the majority of the staff or all the staff will attend and partake in this important development, yeah.
Scott, I just have a couple of questions. With this change, and now it means seniors will only have three calamity days, if we burn through those three calamity days for whether it's, you know, heat at the beginning of the year, which, well, that shouldn't affect high school, but say we had a snowstorm, you know, multiple snowstorms, how would, would it just mean that seniors wouldn't get out those three days earlier than the rest of the students, or they'd have to make them up some other way?
Yeah, we'd have to make up those days. And there are proposed, on top of the calendar, there are proposed holidays that they could be made up, or they'd have to stay as many days after three, like you suggested, we'd have to do that, yes.
Okay, I mean, that hasn't been a problem in recent years, but I do remember some years past where we had, you know, quite a few snow days at the beginning, you know, beginning of the winter. And then my other question is, are we still offering the staggered start for kindergarten? And if so, will this calendar change affect that in any way?
So we'll just push it back a day to us, but it would still be the staggered start?
So it looks like now school would be starting on a Wednesday, so the kindergarten staggered start would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I really, I really like the idea of doing this day, top to bottom, district-wide, all on one day. Because I think that, you know, each building, as we saw a great example earlier, every one of our buildings has sort of a vibe of its own. And yet, I think that it's also really important that when it comes to things like culture and climate, you know, that's not something you can insert into a building, that's something that grows. And, and one of the things I think is really important in order to facilitate that growth is for everybody to have a common vocabulary. And that, to me, is what's important about doing PDs like this together, so that people are having the same experience and learning this material together. Because I think also that when you do things like that, it inspires questions, and it's sometimes it's those questions, the responses to those questions, that really inspire the deeper learning. So I think that this is a step in the right direction, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Okay. And I will be back with the input in June, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Scott. And next we have the first reading of policies, Group C.
Before I go through the first reading of the policies, I do want to make a comment on the consent agenda. We have teachers that receive tenure, which is continuing contract status, so I want to congratulate those teachers. Our recognition, staff recognition committee, instead of recognizing them at a board meeting, which we have done in the past, we are going to recognize them at our staff awards. So that's been added to our staff awards, and I just wanted to make you aware of that. We're excited about that.
That's a good change, Paul.
Excellent, thank you.
The staff awards ceremony has really, really become sort of a big event of the year, which I love.
Yeah, excellent. So if we get to the policies, this is the first reading of our board policies. The policy on reading policies is we'll have three readings before board needs to take action. You will see there's a number of policies for the first reading. I do want to make note of a couple of the policies. A public comic revised, Policy 0169.1 has been placed on there. I know, Dan, you asked, or the board asked to have that put on there. Policy 3120.09 and 4120.09 for volunteers, that's being rescinded, but it's being replaced by Policy 8120 for volunteers. So what Neola has done is they've taken two of the policies, rescinded those, and then placed one volunteer policy in the 8,000 series. Policy 5223, release time for religious instruction, is being deleted. And we talk a lot about our threat assessment and our safety. So Policy 8400, school safety, does have the new threat assessment laws, and we actually aligned it to our threat assessment manual that we showed last week during the board meeting. So are there any questions or comments? Again, no action needs to be taken, this will be brought back two more times to you.
I wish Molly was here, but she's still on the board committee to review the policy, right?
Yeah, she is. Yes.
I've seen some of her changes in some of these things already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no questions. All right, I'll be back next one, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next we're going to have our treasurer's report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I guess before we do the three things for the month, I just wanted to reiterate what the superintendent said. We definitely strongly want to encourage at least the fair school funding portion of the House version of the budget, so, and I, I've seen the simulations, you know, that's, it's millions of additional dollars to our district. I'm trying not to get too excited about that, because now the Senate will introduce their version, and then both versions will go into conference committee, and then the governor, you know, will finally sign that. And generally, at this point, it's, it rarely what you see now is what, what we ultimately end up with. But we certainly want to make our voices known, all our professional organizations are doing that, and it's, it, it, changing those inputs to more current, which we've talked about in previous three things, is really, really helpful for our district and all districts, to get off of guarantees and caps that they, that still exist, because the funding formula isn't working quite the way it should, because we're stuck at those 2019 inputs. So, and if anyone, you know, in, in, in the audience or who watches the, the meeting at home wants to discuss that or see simulations or talk about that, you know, feel free to call me, I'm happy to, to give, give anyone the language they need to speak with their legislators, so that we can advocate for the changes we want to see. So, yeah, the three things for this month, so again, this is, is, our three things each month is our alignment with the strategic plan goal, five objective three, and really just trying to build capacity and make sure we're informing and educating stakeholders about various school funding topics. And then, again, all of these three things are out on the website since, well, it's been about, almost a full year now that we've been doing this, so. All, all the previous ones are out there and available for review. So the first thing we have here is catastrophic costs. So I'm not sure if anyone's heard of that or is familiar with that, but this was top of mind for us, because we just submitted for our catastrophic cost reimbursement last week. So this lags a year, but under Ohio law, we can ask for reimbursement by the state for costs that exceed a threshold for educating students with disabilities. And so right now, we just submitted, and this is, you know, we're in the 2223 school year, we're submitting for 2122 school year. So by the time the school year ends, and then we get all the data together and accumulate the costs for each student, which, you know, we work collaboratively with Student Services Department, it's, there's a lot of information and a lot of tracking that has to be done, and, and trying to, to build out what those costs are. And then it's submitted by student based on disability category. So if the cost exceeds $27,375 per student for categories two through five, or $32,850 for category six, which is the most severe of student disabilities, then we can ask for a portion of that to be reimbursed. You'll see from the slide, the reimbursement is, there's, there is a formula, it's half of the cost over the threshold multiplied by the district-state share. I've underlined this part that says adjusted to the state appropriation. So what happens is the state appropriates X amount of money that they're going to reimburse all districts. We all do all of our calculations, we send that to the state, and assuming they accept those, then they prorate what they've appropriated back to the student, back to each district. So we never get what we are fully entitled to, we only get a portion of that, and you see that the formula's only a portion of it to begin with. But it, it is a significant enough amount of money that it's worth the time and effort that we, we put into doing this, for sure. And the new fair school funding formula actually sets aside by each district a certain amount of money to assist with those appropriations, so that more money will come back to the districts that are educating special needs students. So you see the last bullet there, that we submit a cost for just over 120 students for a 2122 school year.
Now, have we ever requested this reimbursement?
Every year.
Previous, okay.
Mm-hmm, every year. Yeah, we have some students that, you know, that, that the costs exceed $100,000, you know, depending on placement and what services need to be provided, and the severity of disability. So, you know, those are costs that we, again, track and accumulate, and then we submit for reimbursement. So I wanted to bring that forward, because, again, that was kind of a top-of-mind project, but a lot of people don't realize that that is, is kind of part of what we do. So the second item we have for three things is the five-year forecast, which, you know, oddly and interestingly, in the whole year, I've never mentioned it specifically in three things. So we wanted to just document it, put it out there, what the five-year forecast is, because we are in the month of May, so next week we'll be bringing you our monthly financial statements, the May forecast will be in there, that's the one that we'll send to the Ohio Department of Education. But, you know, just in general, you know, that the five-year forecast is a tool that is to kind of communicate and assess the financial health of the district. It has two components, it's both the historical and projected financial data, so it's three years of history, the current year budget, and then four years of forecast, so that's your five-year forecast out. And then the notes or assumptions to the, to the forecast. Now, oddly, districts weren't planning at all, and that's why this came into existence, because districts were just finding themselves all of a sudden needing a levy or needing money that they hadn't anticipated. So, you know, the legislature decided that this would be a requirement that must be submitted, prepared and submitted to ODE twice a year, that's in November, and in May. We do see our bullet here that our district prepares this forecast every month. So you see that as part of your monthly financial statements, even if it doesn't change, we include it in the monthly financials to keep it top of mind, so that we are constantly looking at where we are. And then you'll see two links here. One is so that someone can go out and pull the, the most recent ODE submitted forecast. And also, ODE has a nice fact sheet there called "How to Read a Five-Year Forecast", that really talks about, you know, because people look at that forecast and they think, oh, you know, this is what's going to happen, and it's just talking about how it is a forecast, there are assumptions, and in particular, when you're five years out, and when you have a legislature, like, we don't even know what our next biennial budget is going to look like, or how much money we're going to have. So, you know, it's, it's difficult to do a five-year forecast, we're required to do it, we do it with the knowledge that we have at the time we prepare the forecast, but that changes. And so, you know, if you look at forecasts now versus one that was several years ago, what you see then versus what you see now is probably pretty significantly different. But it's a useful tool, we do it, and, and it helps, helps guide us as we go, and helps make decisions, and helps keep that levy cycle, you know, in mind where, where we are and what we're looking at.
Well, I'll tell you, as a board member, it is the most important piece of paper I look at every month that you provide us, and we get a lot of financial information from you, but this is, in my opinion, the most important thing. And I'd almost say a missing bullet on there would be, you need to show a five-year positive balance, and if you don't show that five-year positive balance, the state comes back and they, they want to know what you're doing about it. I mean, it's, and what's frustrating is, I know, when they first introduced the Fair School Funding Act, which is the not-so-fair-funding act, really, but it's better than nothing, they didn't even tell us what our numbers were going to be, and we still had to report against as if we knew what those numbers were. So, I mean, just the, hypocrisy is the word I want, maybe not, but it's just, I mean, sort of the craziness that we have to deal with in Columbus.
Indeed. Yeah, that's a good point, Jim, though, I'm glad you raised that. You know, if, if the five-year forecast does not show positive balance, ODE is asking us for a formal plan, and, you know, what, what are we going to do about it? So we've been in that situation before, where we've had to submit that. Fortunately, we're, we're still on track to stretch this levy, you know, the number of years that the board said we would, we would do that. And so we, we're, we're not in a position yet where we need to, to prepare any kind of a, a plan, we're in good shape. Okay, and the last thing for this month is the, the district profile report, the CUP report, which you've, you know, we know about, we hear about, particularly at levy time, if people pay close attention to this. This is also one of those things, which is funny, because, well, funny showing that ODE has requirements of us, but then they don't necessarily hold to those same requirements, because we were required to submit all of our EMIS data back in July of 2022, and the report for the 2122 school year was just made available three weeks ago, and, you know, and that was only as we kept pushing to have that data. So, you know, and I get that they have a lot of things going on, but. So this is a, a report that is prepared by the Ohio Department of Education with data provided by districts, but also then with other data that they accumulate, and you see the seven categories of the, the data that they put out on districts, and it's really an attempt to try to provide some comparisons, both to what they would consider to be a similar district, but also to the state as a whole. Now, you know, the whole similar district, there's a, you know, there's a guide to say what they consider to be a similar district, you know, I think we could argue that that's not necessarily the case, but, but they do provide both our statistics versus similar districts, and then against the state as a whole. You'll see in the, in the bullet that says operating expenditure per pupil data that I've highlighted, not adjusted for special education population, because you'll recall that in previous levy cycles, that's been a discrepancy. ODE is putting out two different sets of numbers. One is through the district report card, and one is through this district profile or CUP report. One is just straight-up expenditure per pupil calculation, and the other actually adjusts that based on the weights of your special ed population, so that they can, it, it's a truer comparison across districts, because you can have one district that may have very few special needs students, and you may have another, as, such as we do, that has a very high percentage. And so to just, you know, divide that number out is not necessarily a good comparison.
Scott, isn't it also true that the CUP report does not accurately reflect expenditures based on CTE programs, since we're the lead district?
Correct.
But it's not adjusted for that either?
Right. So there are, there are some, there are some items in the CUP report that are excluded and, and can kind of skew those numbers as well. So ODE has done a decent job, I think, of trying to, you know, there is a, there's a guide out on their website where you can go look at the CUP report, but you can also see exactly what numbers go into that. And so they try to describe that, I think, because districts have fussed so much about, you know, about some of the discrepancies and some of the issues, so. But at any rate, it is available now for, for the 2022. But at any rate, it is available now for, for the 2122 school year, and so we wanted to bring that up as a, as a thing for this month. And also, you have the link right here where you can go. It takes you right to ODE's website, and you can, you could pull up the report for our district. That's it for our three things. Anything else, or any questions about those, or anything, any other things?
I've got a couple, just a couple of comments. One of the things that we haven't mentioned about the fair school funding program, which is important, is that for the first time, the Ohio Legislature, in passing the fair school funding, fair school funding bill, they actually put a price tag on how much it costs to educate a child, which is important. And, and they had dodged that for decades, literally. So that's good. Unfortunately, even with the current proposals for the next biennial budget, the fair school funding pro, bill will take, I just remind, I want to remind people that it requires three pro-public education budgets in order to achieve its goals, which is a, a budget that aligns with their responsibility as mandated in Article 6, Section 2 of the State Constitution, to provide a thorough and efficient funding of our public schools. In my memory, I don't remember two pro-public school biennial budgets, so it would be neat to have three in a row, or two in a row. So that's real progress, and I think that that's great, and people should continue to advocate to their legislators around this. We have two very, very strong pro-public voices representing us. We are very, very blessed to have Juanita Brent representing us in the Ohio House of Representatives and Kent Smith in the Ohio Senate. And I would remind people, though, that they also have every right to reach out to their, to members of the legislature in districts where they work. They don't have to be limited to the districts where they live. So people can think more broadly about their, their advocacy. We touched on it a minute ago, that one of the things that is a real challenge is that we, as a school district, operate on a five-year forecast, a five-year budget, even though our main source of funding, the state of Ohio, only operates on two-year budgets. And they have been known historically, recently, to actually reneg on their promises halfway through and pull money that had been promised to us. Just unilaterally, you now have less money today as you had yesterday. I will point out that that is not a reciprocal ability. So there is a level of hypocrisy there. And then I also just sort of wanted to point out one thing that, you know, we are incredibly fortunate to have this gentleman leading that department. And, and on behalf of the taxpayers, I just want to say that everything that Mr. Gaynor just described about, about going back for the additional funds that this district is due, not every person in his position as the treasurer of the school district around the state either knows that that is possible, knows how to do it, and has the time and will to do it. And so we are really lucky to have Scott in this position to, to go back on behalf of our taxpayers, who we are very grateful for their continued support and generosity toward us. And they need to know that we have a strong advocate in this department. So bravo, and thank you for those efforts. Scott has saved this district really a lot of money over the years. And I think that that's everything as far as this goes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? No. Okay. Now for the president's report. Okay. I attended the COSPA and National School Board Association Conference in Florida in March, March 30th through April 3rd. I had a meeting with Superintendent Kirby and the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union, President, Ms. Rego, and Vice President Underhill to discuss safety concerns and the student code of conduct. I also attended the crowdsource conversation sponsored by Reaching Heights, which was a great turnout. I attended the family leadership luncheon led by Lisa Hunt on April 15th, First Friday Luncheon sponsored also by Reaching Heights. We had an alum by the name of Kobe Bryant, which is a cornerback for the Seattle Seahawks. He met with the Heights football team and students, and that was a fun day. Attended the PTA coffee with the superintendent, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to continue that. Yeah, we had a nice turnout, nice, good conversation with parents. I attended the Rock's Middle School Climate Meeting, April 4th, which was facilitated by Ms. Kirby and Ms. Coleman. I also attended the Heights Career Tech Consortium Workshop facilitated by Katrina Myers and Eric Norris, Norris. And that was, that wasn't, well, I, I went to their lunch, went to the luncheon and spent the time with them in the afternoon, and it was a good workshop, a lot of information's out, and it's going to be really interesting to see what's going to happen with the Cleveland Heights Career Tech and the consortium. And we did have one school that is pulled out. And just for a little nugget, let us figure out how to purpose, how our purpose aligns with the needs of our students and family, and let us walk in it with our backs straight. That's my report.
Thank you.
Okay. Any new business?
I just want to remind the board that the University Heights Memorial Day Parade is coming up on Memorial Day. I did turn in the paperwork for us to march, and I have ordered the stickers to hand out, so we will be ready. So if you have any questions, I will get information when the parade route is put together and the time and all that, but please keep Monday Memorial Day open and join us for the Memorial Day Parade.
Okay. Are we wearing shirts or...
Yeah, let's wear our jerseys, and if you don't have your jersey, then any Heights gear will be good.
Okay. Heights gear.
And we'll have to get the banner from Kathan, the banner we purchased.
My jersey has shrunk a little bit, so...
Yeah. I have gained...
Sure. It's just a hot wash.
I think it needs to be said that Malia is absent tonight because she's taking care of us, sick, mother out of state. So our hearts go out to her on that one.
And if I may, I just wanted to point out and congratulate a local community member, Chrissy Dietrich Gallagher, who was recently recognized by the Ohio School Boards Association as a friend of education. And that is, that surprises nobody in the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District, but it is really nice to know that her efforts are being recognized outside of the district as well. Much deserved.
Good. Any correspondence or announcements? No, I'd just like to announce I won't be attending the work session meeting that Ms. Jody will be facilitating and chairing the meeting at our next work session meeting.
This is next Tuesday?
Yes. Okay.
What's the topic of that meeting?
Equity.
Okay. That's it? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all.
I think we need to vote.
Oh.
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes. Thank you.